Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. At this time, I'd like for you, if you would, to please stand for the invocation that will be given by Councilman Dr. Curtis Edmonds, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And if we could, please, I'd like to request, if we could, a moment of silence. Today, we had a home-going celebration for the great Senator, State Senator Yvonne Miller, and it was done in grand fashion for this phenomenal woman. So if we could have a moment of silence, and at the end of that, Bishop will be on your cue. Thank you.
Amen. Gracious God, our Savior, we thank you, Lord, for the life and legacy of a great Senator, Senator Yvonne Miller. And we thank you, Lord, for her legacy that yet lives on. God, we here tonight as we pray that you will give us good sense of ability to lead forth with the business of the city of Portsmouth, that you keep us grounded and focused on the benefit of all. Bless us, Lord, that, Lord, we will carry out that business in the way which is responsible of those who serve the people. Now, God, be with us as we listen to those who come with concerns, and as we look, God, to pass resolutions and other things that will enable our city to be even greater. We pray, dear Lord, that you give us that confidence in knowing that you are with us. We thank you, and we bless you and praise you for who you are, for it's in Jesus' name that we pray. And then, Lord, we also ask that you be with our clerk as she deals with the sudden illness of her father, that you will keep her and let her feel the worth of this prayer wrap around her and her family. We thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America, and through the Republic for which it stands, we are a nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice of our own.
Thank you very much, Dr. Edmonds. Members of the City Council, will you please indicate your presence electronically?
There are seven members of council present.
Members of the City Council, you have before you a consideration, the minutes of a call meeting of June 25, 2012, a call meeting of June 26, 2012, and a regular meeting of June 26, 2012. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second. The minutes have been adopted, seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Twelve dash two eighty-one, presentations. Will the following please join Vice Mayor Whitehurst at the Sergeant-at-Arms Desk? Presentation of special appeal pants to newly appointed board and commission members. With the Behavior Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Milton Blunt. With the Board of Building Code Appeals, Brandon Sheeran. With the Downtown Design Committee, Ian Vaughn. With the Historic Preservation Commission, Rusty Long. With the History Commission, Carol Hart. With the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Claudette Blunt. With the Newport Community Development Authority, Yolanda Thomas. With the Parks and Recreation Commission, Samuel Blake and Patricia Peel. And with the Wetlands Board, Brendan Griffin.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Ma'am, how are you doing? Congratulations.
One second, congratulations to all of you. You've done a wonderful step to help this city grow and develop. We thank you for your volunteering to be a part of this city. I want to choose somebody to speak for all of you, who would like to volunteer.
Mr. Blake wants to speak. Mr. Blake here.
Blake wants to speak. Thank you, sir. Tell us why you did that.
I don't know. I want to say for everybody, thank you to the City Council, City Manager, and everybody else. We're here to serve our city and move it on to 21st century and beyond.
Thank you. Good job.
We need more people to step up and volunteer. Give a call to the clerks, they can give you an email or some other kind of way of letting you know what's available. Some may take some time, like the Planning Commission, there's only seven people and they rotate quite, not quite as often as you'd like to think. But some are open today. Please step up to the plate and do like these ladies and gentlemen here and help us make this city, this city that's, as you come through the tunnel, you see a shining light. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good job. Madam Clerk?
City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. When you approach the podium, you will see a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. At four minutes, you will see a yellow light. At five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your remarks. Public hearing. Twelve dash two eighty-two, public hearing on rezoning, street closure, code amendment, and use permit applications. Item A, Z twelve dash oh one, Victory Village. Melissa Venable, agent for Victory Crossing Two LLC, requests a zoning map amendment to amend the previously proffered concept plan and related maps in the previously proffered design guidelines for Victory Village. The area is currently zoned MX-EMPK conditional, and the comprehensive plans future land use map calls for the area to be developed with mixed use of employment. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women, electronic roll call, and I have speakers.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of City Council. My name is Fred Brusso. I'm a planning administrator in the Planning Department. I am before you this evening to present to you this application for a requested rezoning in the Victory Village area. Application number Z dash twelve dash oh one. This case and the following requested street closure case are related but need to be presented and discussed separately. Before you is a copy of the digital zoning map on the right and an aerial on the left. Both show the section of Victory Village that is proposed to be rezoned. The rezoning will not change the district designation, but will change portions of the conditions of the MX-EMP conditional district. In March of 2007, the 135 acres that make up Victory Village, an area bounded by Victory Boulevard, Interstate 264, McLean Avenue, and Greenwood Drive, was rezoned to a conditional MX-EMP district. Two conditions are being requested to be changed tonight. They are the concept plan and associated pages of the Victory Village design guidelines that relate to that concept plan in one area of the development. The graphic on the left shows the current adopted concept plan, and the graphic on the right is the proposed concept plan. In comparing the two plans, you can see the proposal involves, one, the closing of one street, that portion of Campus Avenue extending in a southwest direction from Freedom Avenue; two, the creation of an additional street, which is really the extension of Elliott Avenue on the bottom of the development, instead of through the center of the complex; and three, modification of the residential area shape and size. This slide shows the proposed street closures in orange and the proposed new street shown in maroon. This slide of the proposed and current layout is repeated to provide the detail as to the intended uses within the areas. The blue-colored buildings represent residential structures, and the orange represents the commercial structures. This slide is presented to provide a conceptual view of the proposed planned residential area. As mentioned in the staff report, 192 units are planned for this section. A sidewalk along the Freedom Avenue side of the parcel is the only above-ground improvement that has been installed to date. This slide shows three pictures of the area planned for residential development. As you can see, it is a currently vacant parcel of land. This slide shows the development of the northeast side that includes one of the five buildings of the TCC campus. The second photograph shows while the streets have been installed, no other development has occurred to date. On May 15, 2012, the Economic Development Authority, as the entity charged with working with the master developer to implement the master plan, voted to approve the proposed changes to the master plan. As mentioned before, the proposed rezoning has three main changes that are provided on this slide for you again. At the conclusion of the public hearing, June 5, 2012, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the requested change to the concept plan and guidelines subject to additional proffers contained within the application. The proffers from the original rezoning will remain in place as well. And, subject to the approval of the companion street closure request, case number S dash twelve dash oh one, and the staff recommended conditions contained therein. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Our first speaker is Melissa Venable.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and council persons. My name is Melissa Venable. I'm the agent on this application before you. I'm mostly here to answer any questions you may have this evening. I believe Fred has covered the details, the simple details for this application, as is Robert T. Williams. He's here to answer any further questions if needed. As Fred has stated, we've presented this application to EDA, and we have received their approval as well as planning's approval. We've worked diligently with the Planning Department to work through the details and be sure we are conforming to the criteria set forth in the design standards that was approved with the original rezoning application. I ask for your approval this evening on this application with the conditions put forth by the Planning Department, so that we can move forward on the development and move forward on developing Victory Village. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Let me just ask, could you, how level, just summarize the changes from where you existing to now?
Sure.
What was the whole purpose?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that. Thank you. The original plan, the illustrative plan that was labeled concept drawing and labeled illustrative, I think it was seven years ago, five years ago, when that was approved, it simply was a concept plan. It gave us direction. It gave us a place to start so that we could say, this is what we want to see happen. This is the area that we want to see multifamily development. But five years ago, when that did happen, when we looked at that, there was a different product that was the new upcoming thing. It was a multifamily product you saw a lot in the Washington DC area. They're not developing in DC any longer, and they haven't developed it here in Hampton Roads. It was called a donut-type product. We're looking at a more of a traditional product, a Class A market rate multifamily product that is very traditional for Hampton Roads, as well as the DC market and other large cities. But the way this, the site, it was less than an acre, it was, I mean, I'm sorry, it was less than eight acres. It was about seven acres. We couldn't get the density that you were looking for on the site that, the way it was originally laid out. So now, we're looking at eight acres. We can get the density that you're looking for. We can put the buildings out on the public right away, hiding the parking lot inside of the site itself, so you won't see that, creating, again, a pedestrian-friendly community, keeping it very pedestrian-friendly for those coming to the campus, those that live there, those that are using the retail site. So we feel that we're, what we're doing today actually is more friendly for our market conditions in all of Hampton Roads, not just Portsmouth. We're looking at a market rate, apartment complex, or an apartment site, multifamily site, and it is certainly more user-friendly for today's environment.
Well, it looks like it's probably a lot better with, is that Elliott that you keep from cutting into the, right through the heart of the envelope, you're taking it around the perimeter now, right?
Right. As you, if you're familiar with the site, Elliott has, is partially developed. There's a couple church sites on one side. Elliott now will set up a boundary between our site, those church sites, as well as the retail. So it creates a very natural boundary between the multifamily and the retail, and it is, now, we have a continuation of that road as before it was broken up. And we also had a public road that ran through the multifamily site previously, and for safety reasons and for development reasons, that didn't work real well for, again, for a multifamily site. So this just sets up a natural boundary for an eight-acre site to be developed more properly.
Okay, very good. It looks nice. I like it a lot.
Good.
Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Venable.
Good evening, Mr. Moody.
What are the price points going to be?
We don't have a developer yet for this. We're talking to a few people. We don't have the...
Potentially.
I really don't know. I don't know what the price points will be. Mr. Williams can talk to that further, but there...
Too premature for that?
We are premature for that. Again, we've now developed, we've set up a site now with your approval, hopefully, that can, we can move forward with, and that folks will look at and say, yeah, this is something we'd like to do. So we haven't gotten to that point yet.
What's, any projected date for any construction to begin, or is that...
Again, we're still, we're still trying to negotiate and talk with some folks, but we'll be back in front of you, I believe, as we get through the process.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Goddard-Yatrowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. I digress for a moment. I believe you all should consider the first red light camera being here. Thirty seconds after it goes red, click, fifty-dollar fine. Moving on.
Please.
The question Councilmember Moody raised is an important one for our community. When you look back to the history of this site and what it became, price point has a lot to do with the quality of development that will occur here. Now, I'm not big on the vision thing, as one of our former presidents said, but it would be really nice, in this setting, if those apartments were designed to serve the academic community and the technological development community that was originally envisioned for Victory Village. If, you know, you had visiting academics, visiting technical people who could use that as interim housing, if you have members of the faculty and the student body of TCC who would find it attractive, I think that would be ideal. And I want to plant an idea in your minds, because this is already happening in other places. Miami-Dade Community College, in my old haunts of Dade County, Florida, has become another university in the Florida State Higher Education System. In Florida, there is an evolution now among the bigger community college campuses to become four-year institutions of higher learning. TCC potentially, at some point in the future, could be looking in that direction. So this kind of housing, this kind of multifamily housing, rental housing, could service that kind of an adaptation if the plan proceeds with that as a future possibility. So I believe you are right, Mr. Moody, and those who share that particular concern, to be looking in that direction. What is the price point going to be? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on Z twelve dash oh one. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will be given five minutes to speak on Z twelve dash oh one. Members of council, this public hearing is closed.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been approved, seven zero.
Very good.
Item B, S twelve dash oh one, Victory Village. Ordinance granting the request of Robert Barclay IV, attorney, agent for Victory Crossing Two LLC, for the closure of Campus Drive Extended, beginning at the southern line of Freedom Avenue and running southwardly 329 feet, more or less, to its terminus. Vision principle: a change in new directions, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of City Council. My name is Fred Brusso of the Planning Department. I will be presenting to you the application for the requested street closure in the Victory Village area, application number S dash twelve dash oh one. This case and the previous case are related, as mentioned in the first presentation. The additional action on this case is required in addition to the rezoning, because the applicant had filed and recorded a subdivision plat that created Campus Drive Extended. This slide shows two graphics, a copy of the digital zoning map on the right and a prepared map on the left. Both show the area of the existing paper street in Victory Village that is proposed to be closed in order to implement the rezoning that was previously voted on. In December of 2009, the applicant submitted and, after approval, recorded this plat that created the extension of Campus Drive. In accordance with Virginia Commonwealth Statute 15.2-2270, once a street is plotted and recorded, one way it can be closed is to process a street closure process through a public hearing process, the process that is being complied with tonight. The two graphics provided in the previous application are used, again, here to identify the street closure area that is within the green circle. Again, this slide shows the proposed street closure, as you saw in the last application, with the street closure area in orange and the proposed new street in maroon. Again, this application deals with the proposed street closure only. This slide shows the entrance to Campus Extended from Freedom Avenue, looking towards Victory Boulevard. As you can see, no improvements have been made. At the conclusion of the public hearing, June 5, 2012, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the requested street closure with the conditions provided in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item B S dash twelve dash oh one. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have five minutes to speak on item S dash twelve dash oh one. Members of council, this public hearing is closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted, seven zero. Item C, CA dash twelve dash oh two, Victory Village. Melissa Venable, agent for Victory Crossing Two LLC, requests a zoning text amendment to change the text of section forty dash, excuse me, forty point one dash three point five of the zoning ordinance, chapter forty point one of the city code, so as to provide a modification to the approval process for changes to development plans within the MX-EMP zoning district. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women, electronic roll call, and I have a speaker.
Sir.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of City Council. My name is Fred Brusso of the Planning Department. This case is an application for a developer-initiated code amendment for the Victory Village area, CA dash twelve dash oh two. This slide shows two graphics, a copy of the digital zoning map on the right and a prepared map on the left. Both show the area of Victory Village that is subject to the MX-EMP designation. The entire area is being shown as this proposed change will affect the entire development, not a portion of, as the rezoning application you've just heard. In December of 2006, the MX-EMP district was created by City Council action. A copy of the first page of that ordinance is provided on the right. In March of 2007, again by City Council action, the land now known as Victory Village was rezoned, and the design guidelines, the cover shown on the left, was adopted as a condition of that rezoning. In May of 2010, the current zoning ordinance, center graphic, was adopted. This latest document provided guidance on how the regulations within the previous documents dealing with the MX-EMP district was to be enforced, and how proposed changes to the adopted master plan could be processed. As implementation of the Victory Village master plan moves forward, the developer has requested additional administrative flexibility with respect to creating development plans that are consistent with the adopted master plan. The master plan as adopted shows uses, roads, general layout of buildings, surface parking, stormwater features, street cross-sections, et cetera. The conceptual nature of the roads shown on the adopted master plan are required to be adhered to, and, under current city code, the locations of the streets may only be changed by City Council following a public hearing process. To provide additional flexibility, the developer is requesting the regulations, specifically forty point one dash three point five C and forty point one dash three point five E five, be changed to permit changes to the road layout via either an administrative approval or a Type II site review process. This slide shows the two proposed changes in section forty point one dash three point five E five. The first change will allow small adjustments in road locations, small being less than 150 feet, to be approved by the planning director. The second change will, if approved, allow the Planning Commission to approve larger changes in accordance with the Type II review process. At the conclusion of the public hearing, June 5, 2012, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of this application for a code amendment with changes as provided in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our speaker is Mr. Mark Goddard-Yatrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. This particular proposal gives me heartburn in a couple of areas.
This slide shows the two proposed changes in section 40.1-3.5E5. The first change will allow small adjustments in road locations, small being less than 150 feet, to be approved by the planning director. The second change will, if approved, allow the Planning Commission to approve larger changes in accordance with the Type II review process. At the conclusion of the public hearing, June 5, 2012, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of this application for a code amendment with changes as provided in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our speaker is Mr. Mark Goddard Yatrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. This particular proposal gives me heartburn in a couple of areas, but let me pick a couple of nits first. If you look at the section in red in your documents, the phrasing in sections small "V" and "VI" indicates 150, but it does not have any units of measure, so they could be feet, furlongs, meters, kilometers, you get the point. So that needs to be fixed before it goes final. But the idea that shifting streets 150 feet is a small change, not in my lexicon. That is longer than some city blocks in Portsmouth. So you could do a whole different grid if you can shift 150 feet on administrative approval. And I don't think that the original phrasing of the existing code was wrong. If you are going to make modifications, there should be a public hearing process. If there was a public hearing at the beginning and the citizens who are nearest to this project came in and gave their approval, either by explicit statement or by not coming in at all, and then you change it and change it significantly, as I consider a 150-foot shift to be, without giving them the opportunity to be heard, that's wrong. I fully subscribe to Councilmember Cherry's earlier comments in the public work session. I hope that he will state them in this chamber for the record, but this is not ready for prime time, I don't believe. So I would urge you to defer action until the deficiencies that I've identified and Councilmember Cherry identified have been addressed. I want to say this. There's been a lot of emphasis on streamlining for the benefit of developers. Well, you know, developers in my book are second cousin to contractors, and anybody who is a homeowner and deals with contractors for one thing or another knows that it's always hurry up and wait. My stepson had an addition put on his house, and I was happy to see it for my granddaughter's high school graduation. It had started a year before, and as anybody who deals with contractors knows, the course of a development never runs in a straight line, and it never runs on consecutive days either. So I believe that we need to eliminate unnecessary barriers to project completion, but the biggest barrier to project completion will be delays on the part of the developer and his or her contractors. We need to do appropriate oversight of what's going on, and that does take a little time. But, as the saying goes, build in haste and repent at leisure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess for those who didn't know what Mr. Goddard Yatrowski was speaking of, I spoke in the work session about the fact that, as Mr. Bruso said, these changes are going to affect the whole project and that what we, the council, this council, previous councils approved, and what the citizens were told what the project is going to look like, could possibly change if enough of these streets are changed and closed. After discussions with my colleagues, you know, I agreed to support this with the condition that the plan director, who has the ability to make approvals, would notify the council before such changes, and we'd get the picture of what it's going to look like, so we would have the opportunity to weigh in and stop it if it's not something that we agree, that we think we want to do. Because we told the citizens, years after year after year, what this project was going to be and what it's going to look like, and we all understand that change happens, but when change happens, all the players, all the major parties should be informed of said changes, so there'll be no surprises. So with that in mind, that we're going to be informed, I'm going to support it. However, if that, these things start occurring and we're not informed, I would be the one to come back up here and make the motion that we rescind this action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just a point of note, this is specifically for this development, is that correct? This is not citywide, just this development event, and I think that was brought up. Mr. Cherry?
That's true, but this is a major development. Matter of fact, at this time, the major development in Portsmouth, so, and there's several neighborhoods that this is going to affect, so whether it's one neighborhood or an entire city, we as the elected body and the citizens who it's going to affect need to know what those changes are to what we agreed to.
Very good. No disagreement there, just for point of clarification, wanted to make sure the public understood that it was just specifically for this project and that citywide. Councilman Hertie?
Mr. Mayor, members, subject to the amendment of the document to reflect 150 feet, I would respectfully move approval.
If we could, first of all, we need to open it up to the public. This is a public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA-12-02. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have five minutes to speak on CA-12-02. Members of council, this public hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically.
Very good.
This item has been adopted 7-0. Item D UP-12-04 Midtown Jay Gregory Dodd, P.E. of Horton and Dodd, Agent for Chick-fil-A on property owned by Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation, requests a use permit to develop a restaurant with a drive-through. The property is located at 901 Frederick Boulevard, 3113 South Street, and 1614 Hamilton Avenue. The property is currently zoned GMU, and the comprehensive plans, future land use map, calls for the area to be developed with general mixed use. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of city council. My name is Fred Bruso of the Planning Department. This case is an application for a requested use permit, UP-12-04, to allow a restaurant with a drive-through facility along Frederick Boulevard in the Midtown area. This slide contains a copy of the digital zoning map on the right and a staff-generated map on the left. Both show the area along Frederick Boulevard in the Midtown area that the applicant proposes to develop with the restaurant and its drive-through. As you can see from the zoning graphic, the site is zoned general mixed use or GMU. Prior to 2006, this site was developed with an inline shopping center, as this 2002 aerial shows. The suburban-style center included a Firestone Auto Center as the anchor and several storefronts that included retail and professional offices. This center was demolished in 2006. The applicant, as mentioned before, wishes to develop a restaurant with a drive-through facility in the area highlighted on this slide. The restaurant that is being proposed is a Chick-fil-A restaurant. This slide shows the site layout for the restaurant, parking, walkways, building outside seating, and the drive-through. The applicant is also incorporating landscape buffers along Frederick and South Street that exceed the minimum requirements, providing a pedestrian gathering space, and reducing the number of curb cuts that currently exist from eight to four. As provided in the staff report, the intersection of Frederick and Bart Street, shown in this slide, will be required to be upgraded with a traffic signal as called for in the applicant-prepared transportation analysis. The west side of Frederick Boulevard in this area is developed with a Walmart, as shown on the top picture, and Wells Fargo Bank, shown in the bottom picture. To the south of the proposed site is an IHOP restaurant, and to the north is the future home of Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority Administrative Offices. At the conclusion of the public hearing, June 5, 2012, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the requested use permit for a drive-through for a restaurant with conditions as provided in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
No, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Our speaker is Matthew Stellmaker.
Honorable mayor, vice mayor, and members of the council. My name is Matthew Stellmaker, and I'm here speaking on behalf of Chick-fil-A. I flew up this morning from Atlanta, Georgia, with the sole purpose to convey to you and demonstrate our excitement about being here in Portsmouth. It's been a long time that we've wanted to be here, and it just hasn't been the right time, whether it's been an economic barrier or a barrier placed on us in real estate and design and construction by Truett Cathy. Just haven't been able to. So now the time is right, and we're excited to be here. If you're not familiar with our company, I wanted to give you a quick, a real quick rundown. We were founded in 1946, and I think if there were two things that I would say, we were founded on hard work and family values. Our founder, Truett Cathy, started, it was his dream to have his own restaurant, and he founded a restaurant across from the Delta headquarters in Atlanta, Georgia, and he ran it himself for 21 years. And really, I guess Chick-fil-A didn't start at that time, it was the Dwarf Grill. It wasn't until 21 years later, in 1967, that the first Chick-fil-A was opened, and we were only operating in malls until 1986, when we opened up our first freestanding restaurant. That hard work stays true today in our operator model, so the store that will open in Portsmouth will be owned and operated by a single individual who will be within the community. And I think if you go to any of the surrounding stores, whether it's the store there in Broad Creek in Norfolk or the Chesapeake Square Mall, I think you'll see that the operators are really dedicated and committed to the community. All in all, we're excited. This use permit is important for our business, as the drive-through generates 60% of our annual income at each restaurant, and I think that we would all agree that the businesses are important for the community. So if there are no questions, that concludes my presentation.
Okay. I want to thank you for flying up and making the presentation and letting you know we're just as excited as you are. And actually, some 25 years ago, we had a Chick-fil-A here, Matthew, and it did extremely well, and I talked to the owner about six weeks ago.
That's great.
So Chick-fil-A has done extremely well in Portsmouth, and we're looking forward to it, and this one as well. Vice Mayor Whitehurst?
I want to echo the same thing. I want you to imagine being, a mall being demolished, and Chick-fil-A was still selling sandwiches. You sold them downstairs. You did a great job. It took you so long. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Members of council, Mr. Jay Gregory Dodd is here, if you have any additional questions. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-12-04. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have an opportunity to speak on item UP-12-04. Members of council, this public hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been approved 7-0. Item E UP-12-05 Midtown Jay Gregory Dodd, P.E. of Horton and Dodd, Agent for Chick-fil-A on property owned by Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation, requests a use permit to develop a restaurant with parking in excess of the 175% maximum allowed by ordinance. The property is located at 901 Frederick Boulevard, 3113 South Street, and 1614 Hamilton Avenue. The property is currently zoned GMU, and the comprehensive plans, future land use map, calls for the area to be developed with general mixed use. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have Mr. Jay Gregory Dodd and Mr. Matthew Stellmaker here, if you have any questions.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of city council. My name is Fred Bruso of the Planning Department. I'm the Stafford Coordinator for Use Permit 12, UP-12-05, to allow a parcel of land to be developed with more than 175% of the minimum parking spaces required. The site is the same site that was just reviewed for a restaurant with a drive-through, UP-12-04. This slide provides for the council's information a copy of the digital zoning map on the right and an aerial modified by the staff on the left. Both show the area along Frederick Boulevard that the applicant proposes to develop with the restaurant and drive-through. As you can see, the site is zoned GMU, general mixed use. The applicant, Chick-fil-A, is purchasing the site outlined in green, which is approximately two acres in size. This area is larger in size than normally obtained by the applicant, as the majority of their facilities are located in shopping center or mall areas. These areas provide additional parking space through shared parking arrangements. The standards within the zoning ordinance were designed to provide a flexible set of standards that are proposed to accommodate appropriate infill development and encourage pedestrian-oriented development while avoiding excessive paved surface areas and promoting low-impact development and safeguarding historic resources. Section 40.1-5.1E7 is the section that addresses excessive surface parking. Parking that exceeds 175% of the minimum required by the zoning ordinance requires a use permit. This proposed development exceeds the 175% threshold by 21 parking places. This slide provides the council and the viewing public the site layout for the restaurant, with the walkways on-site color-coded to demonstrate how the applicant is dividing the site into a number of areas through the extensive use of on-site walks connected to public sidewalks. As you can see from these three pictures, the site is a vacant parcel. It is surrounded by Dominion Power Repair Yard on the east, IHOP on the south, commercial development of big-box retail and banks on the west, and retail and offices on the north. Chick-fil-A is a specific brand and restaurant chain. It is indeed a destination-oriented restaurant and does generate a lot of demand, which in turn generates a lot of vehicular traffic. At the June 5, 2012 Planning Commission, the commission found, because of the applicant's business model, Chick-fil-A would not be able to create an additional capital improvement budget for the site to cover phased development of the parking lot. The applicant will be bringing in operation that will greatly assist in the economic development efforts for the Midtown area. The applicant would encounter a disruption of business to install additional parking places after the facility was open. And finally, the Planning Commission found there would not be enough room on the east side of the site along Hamilton Avenue, nor would it be practical to eliminate a portion of the parking lot to preserve the site for future commercial or office uses. For these reasons, the commission, at the conclusion of the June 5 public hearing, voted five to one to recommend approval of the use permit with the conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let me ask one, if I could, maybe from one of the representatives. I was actually present at the planning session. I was actually present at the planning session when you talked about maybe a different footprint that you were bringing here to Portsmouth, and that if whatever your strategic layout, if it was successful, maybe some retrofitting in other stores. Were you the gentleman that actually made that presentation in the Planning Council?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Greg Dodd with Horton &amp; Dodd, P.C. We're representing Chick-fil-A tonight as their civil engineers. At the Planning Commission, yes, I indeed mentioned that this is a new prototype for Chick-fil-A, and they are perpetually improving their stores' efficiency and look and always keeping it fresh. For instance, they're putting in something that's foreign to me but inline kitchens that improve their efficiency in getting service and food to people in quicker manner, and this is one of their new prototypes. It's fairly new. So they're excited about putting it in Portsmouth, and they're also excited about having a standalone site that's large enough that they feel like they will have sufficient parking for this operation. You're familiar with a lot of their other sites are out parcels and shopping malls, and there's always overflow parking needed for this particular type of restaurant. So they're actually looking forward to having a site that they feel like is adequate size for them.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, Madam Perk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-12-05. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will be given five minutes to speak on item UP-12-05. Members of council, this public hearing is closed.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been approved 7-0. Item FCA-12-01 Citywide. The City of Portsmouth proposes technical code amendments to the provisions of the city zoning ordinance, Chapter 40.1 of the city code, including but not limited to modifications to regulations to allow ground-floor apartments in certain areas of the Uptown D2 district. Vision principle: A change in new directions, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Good evening.
Sir.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of city council, my name is Fred Brusso of the Planning Department. I'm here tonight to present this item, which consists of the second round of minor amendments or tweaks to the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance became effective May 1, 2010, and the first set of adjustments were adopted by council in December of 2010. Included in your packet is a table like this with a matrix laid out that contains the following information. In column one is the item number, column two, the zoning ordinance page number, in column three, excuse me, the zoning ordinance section number, and in column four, the proposed amendments with the additions and/or deletions. Also included is the type of change. Most of the changes proposed are changes for consistency and/or clarification, typographical corrections, errors, and the like. There are two new items being proposed. Both are proposed to facilitate infill development and accommodate urban design. The first is item number 50, which proposes to reduce the stacking space for small parking lots, and the second is number 54, which proposes to allow a one-and-a-half-foot planter area adjacent to a building for the use of vines on trellises in lieu of the three-foot bed now required for bushes in the ordinance. This graphic shows the typical stacking area the new provision number 50 proposes to change. The proposed language clarifies where the stacking space is to be measured from and reduces the space for smaller parking lots. This graphic shows the planter area adjacent to the building, which under the proposed amendment can be reduced to five feet if vines on trellises are to be used instead of bushes. By a vote of six to zero, the Planning Commission, at the June 5, 2012 public hearing, voted to recommend approval of the proposed text changes as enumerated on the matrix spreadsheet contained in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on C-12-01. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have five minutes to speak on CA-12-01. Members of council, this public hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been approved 7-0. City Managers Report, 12-283, Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into A, An Agreement with South Norfolk Jordan Bridge LLC to Provide Public Safety Services, and B, A Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Chesapeake for Response, Coordination, and Incident Command for the South Norfolk Jordan Bridge. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and a Sense of Community, Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 7-0. New Business, 12-284 Boards and Commissions. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of city council, the Personnel Committee doesn't have any boards of commission members to put forth tonight, but as always, I like to remind citizens that we're certainly in need of volunteers. If you'd like to volunteer for a board or commission, you can check that out at our city's website. You can see a list of upcoming vacancies, and you can also fill out a board and commission application online, or you can call the clerk's office and get an application, but we definitely need volunteers. If you'd like to help write the future history of Portsmouth, just sign up to, for one of our boards and commissions, and we'll put you to work real quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody.
12-285 Items Submitted by Council Members.
Councilman Heratik.
Mr. Mayor, members, respectfully move to amend, revise, and expand the agenda so as to take up a resolution concerning an unsolicited proposal from APM Terminals to lease and operate the Port of Virginia.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted 7-0.
Mr. Mayor, members, respectfully move the council's approval of the following resolution entitled "A Resolution Concerning an Unsolicited Proposal from APM Terminals to Lease and Operate the Port of Virginia," to wit: Whereas the existence of the Port of Virginia was brought about when Governor Holden and the General Assembly of Virginia consolidated the independent ports of Portsmouth, Norfolk, and Newport News in the early 1970s, and whereas, since then, the Port of Virginia has been owned and operated by the Virginia Port Authority, and today, the port is the most valuable publicly-owned asset in the Commonwealth of Virginia, contributing immeasurably year after year to state tax revenues and business profitability, business growth, and employment throughout the Commonwealth. And whereas, Portsmouth has supported the Port of Virginia and the maritime economy in numerous important ways over the years, including designing the Route 164 to accommodate rail service, clearing the Port Authority's title to ownership of the Portsmouth Marine Terminal, construction of the Penner's Point Connector, obtaining funding for the Route 164 rail corridor, clearing title for said rail corridor, and helping to plan the Crane Island Transportation Corridor. And whereas, for the past several years, APM Terminals has operated a state-of-the-art maritime terminal in Portsmouth, and the terminal has met or exceeded every operational, efficiency, and environmental goal, and APM has been a model of corporate citizenship in Portsmouth and has contributed in numerous ways to improving the quality of life for Portsmouth and its citizens. And whereas, APM has submitted to the Virginia Secretary of Transportation an unsolicited proposal on the Virginia Public Private Transportation Act to lease and operate the Port of Virginia. And whereas, APM Terminals is part of the AP Mueller Maersk Group Corporate Family in Maersk, a Danish company, is the largest and most successful shipping company in the world. And whereas, having a Maersk company operate the Port of Virginia is very likely to cause substantial growth in ship visits here with vast potential economic benefit for the state and for Hampton Roads, possibly causing the Port of Virginia to become the largest port on the East Coast. And whereas, the APM proposal would entail making certain cash and property payments by APM to the state in exchange for being able to operate the Port of Virginia for a term of 48 years. And whereas, the property payment would be made by APM would be to transfer ownership of the APM Portsmouth Terminal to the Virginia Port Authority at the beginning of the lease. And whereas, the APM Portsmouth Terminal presently generates real property taxes in excess of $4 million per year to Portsmouth because it is privately owned, and the transfer of ownership from APM to the Virginia Port Authority at the beginning of the lease would make the property tax-exempt as of that date. And whereas, Portsmouth already has the highest real estate tax rate in Hampton Roads region, primarily because almost half of the real estate in the city by assessed value is tax-exempt, primarily due to ownership by either the federal government or the state government. And whereas, the loss of real estate tax revenue from the APM Terminal would have a devastating effect on Portsmouth's real estate tax rate, its ability to pay for essential city services such as police, fire, and public education, its bond rating, its businesses, and the quality of life for working Portsmouth families. And whereas, the Portsmouth Marine Terminal currently pays little or no taxes to Portsmouth. And whereas, it is presently contemplated that the APM lease be signed by the Secretary of Transportation alone after a relatively brief review period. And whereas, extreme care and thorough study should be used before making any major decision about the future of the Port of Virginia. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, one, that the Secretary of Transportation and the Virginia Port Authority, each exercising their independent and their respective independent powers and duties, are respectfully requested as follows. A, to delay signing the lease until its full ramifications for Portsmouth, for Virginia, and for the Hampton Roads region are fully understood and deemed acceptable. B, to have appropriate members of the General Assembly of Virginia participate in the review process. C, to review and meaningfully consider input from all stakeholders, including the Virginia Maritime Association, about the proposed APM lease. D, to negotiate and modify the terms of the proposed lease so that it is no worse than revenue-neutral for Portsmouth after consideration of the combined local tax revenue from the present APM Terminal, any possible expansion of the present APM Terminal, and the Portsmouth Marine Terminal. E, to ensure that financial proceeds from the proposed lease are used primarily to benefit the Hampton Roads region. And F, to give due consideration to the vast benefits that may accrue to the Virginia and to the region if the terms of the proposed APM lease can be made equitable for all stakeholders. Two, that the city manager and city attorney are directed to monitor the status of the proposed lease for the purpose of protecting the city's interests, and they shall report the status of the same to the city council from time to time promptly with any material development. Three, that the Portsmouth delegation to the General Assembly of Virginia and all legislators thereof are hereby respectfully requested to take such actions as are appropriate to protect the interest of Portsmouth and its citizens with regard to the proposed lease. And four, that the Portsmouth Congressional delegation is hereby requested to do the same. That is my motion.
Members of council, because this was not previously advertised, and according to your rules, this would need to be treated as a public hearing and allow for speakers. So at this time, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this resolution concerning an unsolicited proposal from APM Terminals to lease and operate the Port of Virginia, if you would like to speak, please go forward, and you will be given five minutes to speak on this item.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of city council and fellow citizens, I'm Mark Gudlegetrowski of 2713 Sterling Point Drive, Portsmouth. I'm a visual person. I really do better when I get to see things in print rather than when I have to take it in through the ears because there's a certain amount of open space up there. But the voluminous resolution that I heard seems quite satisfactory on first hearing. As members of the public may or may not know, a committee of the General Assembly is supposed to be having a hearing Tuesday at 1 o'clock at the Half Moon Cruise Center to take public comment on the APM Terminal Management Proposal. And I think we would be well armed as citizens to have a copy of this resolution in our hands and to show up to say we stand behind the resolution that I presume our council will be adopting in a few moments. Whoever drafted it, I think, had a very big-picture concept of what the implications of this are and deserves our applause, virtual applause if that person can't be identified at this point in time. But yes, I believe you've hit all the high notes and a few of the lower notes as well on this particular resolution. So I'm pleased to be able to say I support my council, just as I did when you all adopted the resolutions on the ethanol plant. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing no addition.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Tony Goodwin, of course, living in Parkview here in the city of Portsmouth. And I just wanted to basically reiterate the and congratulate the attempt to make this a resolution early on in the stages. As we know, Public Private Transportation Act projects can get very ugly, and they will be continue to get very ugly if precedence is set, which is what we're obviously standing behind right now over the downtown Midtown Tunnel and Martin Luther King Extension. So again, if this is considered an early step from this body and from this city and its citizens, then congratulations to that. But most importantly, this is not the last step that we need to take and obviously come to this as a firm voice, as one voice, as strong voice, and not put ourselves in the limelight for a lot of bickering back and forth because obviously that hurts us in the end. And I think that the example of the Potash sulfur plant...